I'm going to call to order the board of all of our work session Monday, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Roll call.
Schenkel.
Present.
Brown.
Present.
Jones.
Present.
Huckabee.
Present.
Long is absent.
Foley.
Present.
On to the approval of minutes for the public hearing dated March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented by Alderman Foley, second by Alderman Schenkel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes of the work session dated March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Move to approve the work session minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the work session minutes as presented by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On to the agenda. I'm not aware of anything to be added or removed to tonight's work session agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Schenkel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On to work session business. Item number one, discussion regarding the city pool.
I just want a little guidance on what you just want to do with that swimming pool. The summer will get away from us if we don't get started on it. We was, I know we talked about putting the filter system in, but I've heard a lot of scuttle about whether we should even mess with the pool or do a splash pad or what. But you tell me what you want to do, and that's because they're the big list. If we just fix everything in there, ain't no way we can afford it. But to be able to fix it, to be back open next year, you know, we can do that, so.
We maybe be able to do a little bit every year.
Yeah. Yeah, and we thought the splash pad might be the, an easy thing, but we actually got word from, from Murma today that that's not such an easy thing, so.
It's not a cheap thing either.
No, and it's going to require, you know, the same filter system stuff for the water to operate, so.
I'd say do what we can this summer and see to it we can get open next year and sort of advertising like super early for lifeguards and pool manager and make sure we have all that in place when the time comes. That's just my opinion.
That was, that was my question. What you just want to do, because like I said, summer will disappear here and we won't have that.
At least give us some information.
Yeah, get some numbers.
So we have an idea, and that's the direction we need to go in if we can.
Yeah, we, we for sure are going to have to replace the filter system and there is a hole up there in the corner of the pool that I think we could actually fix it ourselves if we had to. And then do some plumbing inside the building itself, but that would get it open next year, so.
Can we get a cost analysis of that versus doing a splash pad?
Just, yeah, we can.
What did Perryville's splash pad cost them? I mean, it's not very big.
About a million dollars. They applied for that water grant. They got, they got a matching grant with it, so they had a community fundraiser, if I recall, correct enough wrong, Tim. But I think there was a fundraiser that was a part of that one for a period of time, and I know that the state grant was tapped into, and the state grant has a match up to half million dollars for a project like that, last time I looked.
It was the, I know they did the fundraiser for the playground.
Right.
Maybe that's what's, but that was, yeah, they, this, that was probably what they, the splash pad, I, I don't recall exactly how they funded, funded all that.
Festus is in progress, a building right now. I think it's one point three million dollars is what theirs is, so not sure.
We're probably talking sixty, seventy thousand to get it ready for next year.
Now, that filter system, when they quoted it, a hundred and twenty, so.
Okay. Still less than one point three.
Oh, ain't that a lot less, but.
You know, and even with the splash pad, you're, I mean, you're going to accommodate the younger kids, but the.
Older groups will be left out.
I mean, they're still not going to have anything, so.
Right.
The good thing about the splash pad is you would lose all the lifeguards and stuff, but.
Right.
Like I said, Teresa got a paper today from them, and they're still.
A lot of chemicals and a lot of.
Yeah, a lot of upkeep to it more than, I just thought it was coming right off the water, man. I figured if the water be good enough to drink, it's good enough swimming.
Really?
Yeah.
If you could get us some numbers and, and get going on it relatively quickly, because like you said, summer will be gone before we know it.
Do you, uh, do you want to look into splash pad, or you want me to just get your numbers for the filter and all that stuff, or?
I'd say just go toward the filter myself.
I mean, a million dollars, we can't afford a million dollars in a splash pad, so even if it's a little, you know, not in my opinion anyway.
Okay.
You wouldn't give you fifty thousand on the way.
Mm-hmm.
It's mine, I'll give it away if someone wants it.
Good, James?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. Request from Teresa, sorry, from Tessa with Madison County Chamber to host a beer garden in Azalea Park for Saturday, May third.
Um, this is separate from the truck pool beer garden that they usually have, um, so they wanted you a cantina that's down in the actual park, um, so it would be in the upper ball field, um, so it's all fenced off, so it'll be a closed area, and we'll have someone checking IDs at the gates, so no one will even be able to go in the tent area that's under twenty-one. So that's in addition to the wristbands and the event cups. Um, they're getting a tent, and we'll have tables and chairs and all that in there, so we're just hoping to keep all of that separate from the rides and, um, just the, uh, regular food trucks and all that, so no one will be able to leave the fenced off area with alcohol.
This is mainly for the Chambers fundraising, then?
Yes, all the funds will go to the Chamber. They just wanted us to, um, there's a grant coming up to apply for new surface for the playground, and they just kind of wanted us to apply for that grant, which we were already doing, so.
But yours in the ball field closest to the stage, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's actually, the tent will be set up right behind the stage area, kind of.
Do we have electric there somewhere, Jeff?
Yeah, we, we, I mean, we can get it to them, no problem.
I'll make a motion to approve that request.
I'll second it. Motion to approve the request by Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Huckabee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, request from Carla with Freddertown Eagles to host a beer garden at the Truck and Tractor Pole on May third.
Yes. Um, Carly's not able to be here tonight, but yeah, it's just the same thing will be set up to the left of the concession stand. Um, have plastic cups be starting at ten a.m., I believe. She said that we'll be out there at nine, but it'll be done by eleven.
Kind of permits or anything that?
It's the same permits that Tessa's got to have. Just a non-for-profit, okay, it'd be a picnic permit, it'd be a picnic license, so.
They did it in October.
Awesome. I'll move to approve that request.
Second. Motion to approve by Alderman Foley, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four, request from Hobus for Johnson to attend the two thousand and twenty-five police clerk's training, August eighteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five in Jefferson City.
It's the same thing she does every year.
Every year.
And we got, it's on the training budget, so moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Request from Hobus to approve putting on new decals for the two thousand and seventeen Ford Explorer from White Trash Customs in the amount of twenty-five hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents.
That's not just decals, that's for the wrecked car. That's decals and all the equipment that was taken off the old car and putting it back on.
You approved the decals when we bought the car, but they, we didn't have the price for them putting the equipment back on yet, so when the boys came in, it was higher than what you all had approved, so I had to come back for you guys to approve it.
But it's something we've done already, or we're?
They've already done it, yeah. And we had to do it on, for the, on the vehicle, because otherwise they couldn't use it without the equipment.
All good, so moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion approved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Foley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six, request from Settle to approve fertilized fields at Sports Complex from Advanced Turf Solutions in the amount of four thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars.
This is the seed fertilizer and herbicide we put on them things every year. It's getting cheaper each year, but it's slow by the end.
This, yeah, it seems pretty reasonable, honestly, for how much grass is there.
Yeah, things started out close to nine thousand dollars first year.
Since this is the county's ball field today.
I was going to say, can we get the county to pitch in half?
Oh, suggest that.
Thank you. In the meantime, do we need to pay for it?
Yeah, we probably do.
I'll make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Motion to approve the request by Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, number seven, discussion regarding parking downtown Craigwood in Matt Gresham. I know Craig had an emergency today, um, so I don't know the full detail, but they've been having issues with people parking longer than they're supposed to there at the, on the square, um, so they were, they made the request to be on the agenda tonight to bring it back up, because they knew that, that there had been some discussion, they knew that the cost was like two dollars, and we had been discussing what we're going to update it, what we're going to do, um, so that was what this was on the agenda for. But they're having, they're still having issues with the tenants parking on the square during business hours, and they've, they've tried talking to the property owner, and he's not getting involved.
Do you have any input, Chief Hobus?
Yeah, they were behind the building. The guy that bought Vince's back of the building is not going to cooperate with any of the businesses, or everybody was working together before we had a plan that you're working, and now it's come over. Some of his tenants will park in front and behind, and that doesn't, that takes up spaces for the businesses up front, so that's also problems.
Well, that business, they, they own property behind the building that's theirs to park on, correct?
Yeah, and that's where they're parking.
Okay, so, I mean, if it's, if it's their property, they can park there as long as they want.
Right.
But we're talking about out front.
Right.
You know, they don't need to be parking out there all day long when they've got parking in the back that's reserved for them.
So, so that two dollar ticket's really making them move. I, I'm not being mean, but.
Yeah.
We've talked about this, nobody's, we've talked about this for over a year until we changed it, I mean.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, but I think you were kind of waiting on us to kind of direct you on this thing, weren't we?
We were, as I was calling on it, I didn't know that's what we were talking about tonight. I, I'm, yeah, I had given you some information, but I don't remember what, well, the parameters of it was, but yeah, I was waiting for some direction.
Because there was discussion about chalking tires and not chalking tires and, um.
Well, you can't chalk, can you chalk tires anymore?
You can.
Okay.
So what's your recommendation, Eric?
I think that, I mean, we communicated with them and everything was working fine. I think that it was, it's an issue of, like, for example, Craig has an employee, a female employee, that doesn't like to park in the back and walk to the back, especially if it's raining or it looks like there might be bad weather, and wants to park up front sometimes too. It's not just, it's not just people pulling in there and, hey, there, you know, there's a lot of this of the people that are in the businesses. It's all, it's always that way.
Fortunately or unfortunately, if we change the, the fee, I mean, I'm not opposed to making a fifty dollar fine, but, uh, to get people's attention, if that's what we got to do, we got to do, but it's going to affect everybody, not just those one or two people that live in those apartments.
Right.
So, and how many?
That's what I wanted everybody to understand, is like, you know, I think it was working really good, and then, like I said, Vince sold the property, and a new guy came in, and, um, we tracked off him a couple of times, and he just didn't seem very receptive to anybody being on his property at all. Um, like, and they kind of shared space in the back, you know? And, uh, so.
But how many courthouse employees are parking around there?
There you go, that's another issue.
Especially on days of quarter, it's slammed.
Well, I know on the commissioner's days, there's three on Monday mornings that.
I think the whole goal of, you know, the downtown area that they're trying to revitalize, this has been, put all the work into it. We don't want to go killing people, want people to come down there, be afraid to park or not. You park down there, you don't get it? You know, we need to look at a solution, maybe trying to find some more parking or, um.
Well, they have access to parking, but obviously people.
We found a whole parking lot that they allow us to use.
But yeah, if you're too lazy to walk from the back of the building, you're going to be too lazy to walk half a block, so.
Hey, that's another point, yeah.
Because there's plenty of parking in that part.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't ever see it for.
No.
Yeah, I, I mean, when I travel for work and my wife and I go out to eat, typically we're parking a couple of blocks away from someplace downtown and walking, it's not like it's always right up front.
And there's nothing else we can do to add parking.
Can you guys allow me to get with Tessa, and maybe she can, like, we can do some of the business owners, we can get them together and have a meeting just with them, and I can come in and address some of these issues real quick and just end that meeting about the parking, then we'll come and do back reports back to you before we go make any decisions on.
I don't think that's a bad idea, because if, if all of them are like, yeah, we need, we need those cars to be moving, then we could update the ordinance and, and, and do it, but we're going to kill business.
Anyway, because the two dollars is nothing, I mean.
Right.
You can't like, sold it for two dollars anymore, so.
I mean, that's not even paying the officer that's.
Time for stopping and.
Yeah, that's having to chalk tires, so.
For ten bucks a week, you got your own private parking spot.
I need, I need a little more money.
That's pretty reasonable.
So I think we all agree that Eric can, but I'd also like to ask Mary to pursue the change in the ordinance of some sort.
I need to have some reservations, of course, you want to change too, and I can pull that information back out and then take a look at the options.
I think the question is, is we're going to put a ticket on it, what's it worth, what's, what's, what's an amount that's worth the time of an officer, you know what I'm saying? Like, I know it sounds silly to say out loud, but if it's five dollars and ten dollars, we're still in the same hole, right?
You heard what I said, I'm not opposed to putting a fifty dollar fine on it, if it's an issue.
Right.
But it's going to affect locals as much as it is, or more than, you know, so if Eric can fix the problem, that's great, but if we can't get the problem fixed, we've got to figure out how to try to fix it.
Is there a way to make it a progressive fine, so additional?
For repeat offenders?
Yeah, like, it's their, right.
And that way you're not.
The trouble with that is somebody, police and or me, has to keep track of.
Were you aware of who the people are typically? Same people?
It'll have to come to me in the.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of times, like, like they said, TV courthouse, where it's some of the business owners themselves, but, you know, it looks like it's going to rain, they saw it, want to park in the back and walk around the hole. It's not like there's a back door to come through, they have to walk on the whole block, get into the front, some of them do, so, um, and just, you just keep, and you run into that, there's not very many spaces up there, guys, that we're talking about, so when they get taken, it's.
It's currently two hour parking?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And is that, that's just during working hours?
Yeah.
Eight to five, or eight to six?
It's a dollar, nine to five.
Nine to five.
Like I said, you know, I mean, it's not, it just not, it does nothing to say, hey, we're going to give you the two dollar fine, ticket's going to be two dollars, I mean, no, they just, nobody cares about that, so we definitely get the business leaders involved, owners involved, come up with a good solution here.
I'll report back to us if you order it.
Yes, sir.
Let us know how, let us know how the conversation went.
I'll get with Tess, and we'll, we'll, we'll have a meeting, and we'll get back with you.
Yeah, we'd like, make sure you let them know that they're not exempt either, just because they own the building, so.
Right.
That's all I mean.
Right. Paul, do we still want to have Mary go ahead and draft us something up, then?
Well, I think she probably needs to be aware of the direction we need to go in. As far as monetary, we don't know yet, all right? We're not going to make a statement, but, but we obviously need to change the ordinance, in my opinion, correct?
Probably the only thing it's going to change is going to be the cost of the fine, yeah.
I mean, I think we probably may look into progressive, possibly, but again, that more manpower.
Paperwork.
It puts a burden on, somebody has to keep track of this person.
So we, we're thinking that a, an excessive fine would be more beneficial than a progressive type fine.
It would be easier on me.
Okay.
That's all about you, Mary.
It's all about you.
Uh, number eight, request from Lawson to go out for bid for Cap America substation repairs.
What this is, is the Cap America sub out there, uh, it's gotten low on oil, it has a leak, and it's heating up, um, and we have to bid out because I got a plum area cost to fix it, and, uh, we're, we're going to work on the other transformer that's sitting there, too. It hasn't been online for almost twenty years, I guess, before we figure it out. Um, it's, they're two, they're two of the same transformers, but since it's been sitting there so long, uh, I don't even want to take a chance of turning it on, and they had moisture in it, so that one has to be fixed first. It has a leak in it also, uh, so we can take the other one out of, out of, offline and that, uh, and I talked to the guy that we got our bid from, so I had some idea of what we're going to have to have, and how much it's going to be, and it depends how fast we get the bid out. They may have a slot in, uh, first of July, but if we can't make that, it's going to be sometime in August, and, uh, if we have, if we're raining till August, I've already talked to Tracy, uh, we're going to tap onto the water line and put a phosphor hyder in there where I can put water on it all summer to keep it cool, because it's, right now it's hot to the touch, and I'm afraid it won't make the whole summer. It, it doesn't have that much load on it, but it's just heating up, and it's, it's going to end up doing what the downtown sub did.
It has fans on it at all?
It has fans on it, but, but the fan, but the fins are cool. It's the oil's not going through the fins that circulate to get the heat out.
Yeah.
It's all staying in the tank.
You're low on oil anyway, that's the, right?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
But we have to have permission from you guys so I can put out the bids to, to get it fixed.
How old is that substation?
Uh, I think it's, I think the transformer is ninety, ninety-eight, I think.
Is it that old?
We bought it years when we put it in, and we, I done the dirt work on that thing, so.
It, it's set, the transformer's set for, I don't know how many years before the, the sub was put in, in service.
And maybe that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, they, I mean, it, I know it at least set for five years.
Yeah, you remember, they put that thing together, and then they didn't do it.
Right.
They laid it off at Washington.
Yeah, so.
Because I think I was on the council when they actually built the substation, but I don't remember talking about that, those subs are old, or we had had them for a while or something. I'll make a motion to put that out for bid, if that's what we need to do.
Yep, second.
Motion to approve that request by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Discussion regarding rates for installing a new electric service.
This is what I brought to you last month. Uh, I got some replies back from the other, some members of the P A. I think you guys have, uh, what, what I got back. I, I noticed that it seemed like the smaller towns, uh, one, I forget which one, they said is just, we eat the costs of just doing business and that, but I noticed that the more larger towns, that they was charging, because I think they're more, doing more work, so they're noticing more the, of the cost to put, uh, new infrastructure in and that, so. And all the, all we're really dealing with is just whether we want to charge, uh, I, I go by the twenty percent of what our cost is, or we still stay the same, we charge our cost, and then we charge half of, uh, for new transformer and new, new construction, commercial, industrial, or I guess it would be multifamily, that would be apartments, that would be considered that, because most of your apartments have their, are going to have their own transformers, they're not going to be residential, coming off of, very, very seldom.
Didn't we have the printout last time of the proposed increases?
Yes.
I think we did.
Mm-hmm.
I don't mind.
I assume if you approve this, then, then I'll get with Mary what our proposals would
be, and then you'll see it in the ordinance of, of the, of what the increases would be. And there's some, there's some language in some of the ordinances that, that need to be changed, too, and that, because I found one where it says, the city will provide all material for residential customers. We haven't done that since I've been working here, so that's something that needs to be changed, and that, so there's few, few things in the ordinance that need to be tweaked and that, which will be included when you approve it.
I mean, I'm okay with moving forward with it.
Second. Motion to approve by Alderman Foley, second by Alderman Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Uh, number nine, discussion regarding rates, oh, sorry, number ten, request for final pay application number eleven for the police department in the amount of ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty cents to Brock Miller Construction Incorporated.
Are we going to stop, Eric? We done, everything good? Things check off?
We won't know about the, we, the cooling units and tell you it's hot or cold, if, how that building does, and they know that, take, take from Brock Miller knows that, we've had this conversation.
That's like we talked about last time, they did come in, put a bunch of insulation up in the ceiling where it was missing, so.
I guess that will be a, a warranty item anyway, I mean, if we pay the bill, it's just, you know, if there's an issue, that's under the one year, I guess there's probably one year warranty on everything.
Yeah.
I would think.
When it comes to the heating and cooling, it's the installers say that it's an engineering issue, an engineering issue, uh, they say it's not, so it's kind of back and forth thing, and we will know if Brock Miller's fixed with the, all that insulation they brought in, if they found that it wasn't insulated, if that's going to be the fix or not.
We've talked to Andy and Brian at, until they followed, and they, I mean, they've got everything documented, so.
Okay. Mary, where does this put us if we pay out on this bill? Is there going to be an issue if we have future problems?
Well, I, I don't have a crystal ball, but, uh, like you said, there, there is the one year warranty period where they're supposed to keep it, but if, as Eric pointed out, if it wasn't the right size period to begin with, then, you know.
That's not a warranty issue then.
Exactly.
That's just you messed up, now you got to buy bigger.
They're already, they're already saying that, now, like, what's the name of the company?
Association.
Association, no, they're, they're saying it's, they've already come and did all the checks they need to do, and it's a, uh, that is a not clear problem.
Well, it wasn't a mistake on our part. Either had to be the.
We didn't do it.
Had to be the contractor or the engineer.
Well, it would be not the contractor, contractor could put in what was the design and the plans.
Be the engineer then.
Call force, it would be the engineer.
Tim says that engineers never wrong.
Good ones.
So what's your suggestion here, Mary?
Again, I don't have a crystal ball, I, there's no way for me to know whether you've got the backside unit in there or not.
We're not going to know for a couple of months.
Right, right.
We try to put off the final payment for two months, they may holler about that.
And if the contractor, you got the, uh, Prompt Pay Act that requires you to pay the And if the contractor, you got the uh, prompt pay act that requires you to pay the contractor promptly. And if the contractor put in what he was told to put in by the plans, I think you have to pay the contractor.
Kind of.
That makes sense.
I think if you got whoever's responsible at the end, if it's not sufficient, you're probably going to end up with back and forth, if not the courtroom, whether you pay these guys or not. If, if it were to get to that point.
I feel like we need to go ahead and pay the final payment to the contractor.
The motion?
Yes.
I'll second it. Motion to approve that request by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Huckabee, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. Uh, number 11, discussion regarding yearly maintenance contract for Freder Town Police Department with Associated Sheet Metal Incorporated for Heating and Cooling System.
Let's see.
Yes, we did, but we need guidance if you guys want to do that or not.
Alderman Jones and I talked about this. We looked, turned around and looked at the um, actual units. I, I could do that month with myself. I mean, I will, I'll change those out on all four of the units. I would rather, if we're going to, I'd rather have the, since our, I'd rather put that money into a contract for the maintenance for the generator.
Yeah, I don't know if they've ever approached the city about that or I don't even know who installed the generator, but that's going to be a high dollar item if it's not maintained. But those filters, I mean, I, it's, it's like a residential, the, the only weird one is the package unit outside, but there's just one door you open up and there's a filter you change out there.
I'll go, I'll go holes out, pull the filters out. I got data to do that whole, I don't know.
And it doesn't affect the work.
Yeah, it doesn't affect the work.
Yeah.
You just had tabled it and said to bring it back.
Sounds like we need to just forget about it.
Yep. Second.
We'll, we'll, we'll bring back the next time the generator issue.
It's best making a log, keeping a log when you change it out.
Yeah, well, we should do it at the first, every moment.
But if you document it in a book or something, there's ever an issue, you can, here's my book, this is where I changed out filters and.
All right, so motion not to proceed with that by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Polley, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 12, request to approve 2025 liquor licenses.
These are just the standard every year annual liquor license that we have. We'll be mailing out.
We had any issues, Eric, with any of these?
Other than labels, that's it. And they already took care of theirs through court.
And theirs have been better. At this point, they haven't had anything new there, right?
Yeah, one of their suspensions, they had another suspension not very long ago when we were there and they had a sign on the window that they couldn't serve.
Okay.
I didn't think it had anything to do with our original.
I don't, you know that.
I don't know, but they, I think they came back in on a, they came back in and did their own little audit and found some stuff and dig them again.
So this is the state.
The state.
I think all, all ours.
Yeah, they're already off ours. Uh, everybody else has been fine, no issues.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Motion to approve the request by Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's no closed session after the work session. Do I have a motion to adjourn the work session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn the work session by Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?